I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consider our motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to the consent agenda. I'd consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Something has to get pulled? That would have been part of the...
I had a question on 3B in regard to if there's any clarification in regard to something from the DNR, a little bit more on that.
I don't know. You have what I have, so I don't know.
Well, I think one of the things was that there was a stated in there that we approved for one requirement, and I think if I'm not mistaken, there is provisions for two. And I just like some, along with Commissioner Gibbon, some clarification on how that happened.
It's just a report, gentlemen. I think we can follow up and put it on our agenda for next week if we want to have more clarification.
Yeah, I can too, Madam Chair.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We'll go ahead with opportunity for public comment. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. State Senator Jim Bolin, District 16. I represent all of Union County and the majority of the geography of Lincoln County as well. Very briefly today, I just want to give you an update about legislative redistricting, which I know that a number of you have been interested in the past. We had our first committee meeting this last week, didn't have a... make a whole lot of substantive decisions. But again, I am back on the committee again, trying to look out for the interests of both Union and Lincoln County in this particular area. I know that the goal of the commission, again, I was on this committee 10 years ago. The goal of the commission 10 years ago was to have at least one district entirely within the confines of Lincoln County. Prior to that, prior to 2011, Lincoln County had been divided up four ways, being in a minority position in all four districts that occupied the county. And so the desire of the Commissioners was to have at least one district entirely within the confines of the county. We were able to accomplish that. And if that is your continued goal, sometime in the future, you probably would need to inform me of that so that I can carry that back to the committee in some form, in some fashion. We do have our state number. The official number for the state population of South Dakota is 886,667. You divide that by 35, you come up with a perfect... divided by 35, there's 35 legislative districts. A perfect district would be 25,333. Court decisions have allowed us a 5% deviation, higher or lower. That means the lowest number could be 24,069, and the highest number would be 26,599. And we will get our official county, city, by the Census Bureau, they've said that they will give us our official county, city, township, precinct data no later than August 16th. But that will compress our work quite a bit. Just a couple of dates to note, tentatively scheduled October 13th, that's a Wednesday, at both 2:00 and 6:00, there will be public input on, from Commissioners and the general public as well, city council people, mayors, on what they think the map should look like. That'll be, there'll be two sessions, one at 2:00 in the afternoon, one at 6:00 in the evening. October, Wednesday, October 13th, there's not been a venue established as of now. And then the final decision will be made by the entire legislature, as the Constitution says, on Monday and Tuesday, November 8th and 9th. By the South Dakota Constitution, we have to have this done no later than December 1st. If we don't, then it goes to the, goes to the South Dakota Supreme Court that has to do it within 90 days. And that's all, that's a part of the Constitution as approved 40, 50 years ago. So again, the date for the Sioux Falls public hearing, October 13th, at both 2:00 and 6:00. And then the special session is on November 8th and 9th. And again, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to contact me. I'm glad to be back on the committee, and I do hope to look out again for the interests of the entire population, but especially Lincoln and Union Counties. Any questions, be happy to try to answer them.
Jim, have they located that those hearings for October 13th, and any, besides Sioux Falls, do they have?
Oh, there's, that's just one of the...
No, but I mean, are there specific, a specific location they're going to have this at?
No, I don't know. We have not, we don't have a venue yet.
Because 10 years ago, I think you were at the vocational school.
Right. I can't answer that. I'm not chair, but I'm just kind of bringing the information that I have. But I know that the LRC staff and others are working on securing a location.
Thanks, Joel.
Is your, Madam Chair, is your committee a volunteer committee, or how many are on it? Or are you appointed, selected?
You get, you get picked. In the Senate, there's seven members, and you get picked by the, what's called the President Pro Tem, who is elected by the entire Senate. And in the House of Representatives, there's eight members, and you get picked by the Speaker of the House. And the committee, as all committees of the legislature are, are balanced according to partisan makeup of the legislature.
So how many are there on the committee?
Fifteen, eight and seven, eight and seven, 15 members. And we'll bring back a report to the legislature, we'll bring a recommendation to the legislature on what the map should look like, and then the legislature can vote it up or down.
Weren't you involved 10 years ago?
I was, yeah, absolutely.
Jim, you had a peek at what our Lincoln County population is?
I do not. You know, that's one thing, we, and I don't quite understand, that's a great question, Commissioner. I don't quite understand how they can have a state number without a, without knowing what the county numbers are. But one of our goals, I will say this too, one of the goals, and this was kind of, this was pretty much decided on last Tuesday, is that we are going to work diligently to keep most of our counties together. There are, we estimate, based off population estimates, you can get off the, you can just go on census.gov and get an estimated population. It's an estimate, it's estimated that there are seven counties in South Dakota that will be bigger than legislative districts. In other words, they'll be bigger than 25,000. And there is one that will be kind of right in the sweet spot, that's Lawrence County. And that there, that means there's going to be 58 counties which will be below a legislative district. And from my experience 10 years ago, I can tell you that auditors in the counties that don't have to be broken, they're going to want to be whole. They're going to want to be whole. For instance, Turner County is going to want to be whole, Clay County is going to want to be whole, Hutchison, I could name off the whole gamut of... The only seven that have to be broken that are too big are Minnehaha, Pennington, Lincoln, Brown, Brookings, Cottington, and Meade. Those are the only seven that are going to be bigger than a legislative district. So stay in touch if you have questions, and we look forward to getting your input. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak during public comment? If not, we'll move on to the Commissioner reports if there are any. Does anybody have anything today? All right, we'll move on to regular business. Item one, Sheri.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, per your request, I brought in Dustin from No Ink to discuss the pole pads more. And on the phone, we also have Brad, who is...
Hi, good morning. This is Brad with No Ink. I'm here if you need me.
Good morning. Can you go ahead and just state your name and address?
I'm Dustin Van Bellen. I'm from Pierce, South Dakota.
All right, Dustin. When we talked about this last time, there was some discussion about like the security involved since its access is the internet, so if maybe you could start with that?
If you guys do decide to be in a live environment, I think that's what Sheri and I talked about, you may go live. There is some security stuff that, I guess Brad, that's why I brought Brad on, he can discuss. What would be your main concerns, though? Are they about how it's encrypted going back and forth, and how they're, I mean, there's protection on both sides, you can put passwords on the devices and stuff like that. Brad, do you want to really quick step in, though, and let them know kind of how the data is transmitted and stuff like that?
Yeah, I can, I can do that. Again, my name is Brad Brockmire. I am the West Coast Regional Manager, so thank you for having me today. Quick, No Ink Security, we are 100% developed in the United States by background-checked individuals. We use the highest level of off-the-shelf encryption and security tools. So we use a billion-dollar company called Apple and Amazon to do most of our security. We do a lot of our in-house additional security added to there, but we typically use a lot of what's already baked into Apple's security and Amazon. We have been extensively tested by the federal, state, and local private entities. And we have some reports on different things that we, that we have findings and that we have mitigated and improved, so that's also a really exciting thing. Currently, we're going through a SOC 2 audit to also prove that our security and our processes are all in place that we have, and that we hope to have that finished up here sometime by end of July. Really quick, on the pole pad side of it, like we said, we use the Apple security, so we use Apple encryption. That sends, that sends data in transit, in encryption, and also stores at rest data in, on the pad encrypted. So if you brought up a thumb drive that could connect to an iPad, no matter what, it is encrypted, so you'd have to have a special tool that is built by our team to unencrypt that data or information. And likewise, when the pad is transmitting either peer-to-peer, which is pad, pole pad to pole pad, or pole pad up to the cloud, that is also encrypted, just to make sure we're on the same page. We also use a mobile device management system by Cisco called Meraki. That helps us manage the physical hardware where that is, the security on the device. We lock it down several levels, so you can't put other applications on the iPad. You can't airdrop files, you can't get files off of the iPad without permission from the, from the user. That, that would be either the county level or state level, or No Ink level. The last thing is we use FIPS 140-2 at rest and in transit encryption as a best practice. And then, like I said, in our, in our cloud side, we use AWS, we use On Guard from Amazon, and AWS Shield to protect our system from any DDoS attacks or opening up our systems to any threats or vulnerabilities. So that's kind of the really high-level background technical stuff that we have in place. Does anybody have any questions or anything I can add more to that?
What, oh, go ahead, Joel.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering right now what counties in, counties or cities in South Dakota are using your product, if any?
I can take that, Brad. Right now, we're, we're starting to do a transition from the older pole pads they've had over to our No Ink pole pads. We have 14 to 15 counties that are interested. We've had two counties right now actually sign to work with us. They were used recently up in Sioux Falls at the school district election in a vote center environment, so they were live interconnected to the cloud and to each other. We had 45 pole pads up there for that school district election. They were also used in Hackin County for the primary election. So we're just, like I said, we're starting to get these into South Dakota. They are used, I think, Brad, if I'm not mistaken on this, in 26 other states too, throughout the United States.
Yep, that is correct. Yeah, we have 900 different clients across the United States. Some of the largest from New York City to LA, and then to some of the smaller counties in Arizona, Utah, and throughout there.
What, what issues have you had, if any, with the product? Any hiccups in any of the elections?
I mean, I can attest to one, attest for the one in Sioux Falls. If you spoke with them, or if you spoke with the poll workers, there was no, I mean, I actually was the onsite support for that election, and we, I literally got bored driving around to the place. There was no really big issues. I mean, printer ran out of paper. If you do the proper training, put the proper procedures in place, they're just, they're basically just a flawless technology for these people to use, so.
And does No Ink, or do you folks handle all of that training for staff?
I would, I would handle that. I would help. It's basically a train the trainer. So I was, I would usually come in for the, probably your first two elections, work with Sheri on training your poll workers, so that they could actually mimic what I would be doing for the training, and then they can probably take it from there. So there'd be, basically called the train the trainer, but I would also have the poll workers there. We would do a poll worker training so that she could see how that would be done. And then I would also help with setting them up for the first time, showing her I would be onsite for the first time, first or second, probably, I would say, one to two elections. Then after that, they usually say, get out of here, we don't need you anymore, which is what we want. And then there is an on-call-in support through No Ink, which again is tremendous, too. If you call the number and hang the phone up, they actually do call you back. And so they're, they're always there, too, during the election. They will have people there if there's any problems. In a live environment, it's really nice, too, because they can get to and help you with those pole pads if they need to, so.
Anybody have any questions?
Brad, Joel Aaron's here. You had mentioned that there were some state entities that you were certified by. Are any of those state entities in South Dakota, and if so, what's the name of that entity?
I don't believe anything in South Dakota has certified us. The state of California has certified us through a testing company called Pro V&amp;V. They are a testing lab for election equipment. We also tested by CISA and FireEye is the private entity. We're also certified in several other states, Ohio, Indiana, Tennessee, and Alabama, in New York, New York State, sorry.
Now, in this, there may have been no issues in South Dakota. How many jurisdictions in South Dakota use No Ink product?
Right now, actually, the Total Vote product that actually is being used is now a, is part of a No Ink product. We actually did, we obtained B-Pro, and we actually now are, we, Total Vote is now part of our repertoire. So this is kind of the natural progression. These pole pads are part of that, and it's not, they're not part of the B-Pro, but they are No Ink solution for pole pad. And now you have that we're, we're helping with the Total Vote solution, too, which every county in the state uses, so.
And there were some problems with B-Pro pole pads in the last election.
Yeah, I cannot attest to what the problems exactly were, but from what I do know, yes, there was not a local file on the pole pads, from what I had heard, and they lost internet connection. And these pole pads, like ours, the number one thing is they do have a localized database on them, so.
Yeah, and I think the B-Pro pole pad issue resulted, affected eight different counties in the last election. Judges had to get involved, extended times for voting, all of those things were happening.
From what I understand, yes, sir. Yep. I wasn't involved with that one. I was actually out of state during that one, so.
Well, you and I have talked before.
Yes, we have. I do remember.
Back in 2012, we participated in the Minnehaha County election review commission.
Yes, sir.
So I've heard from you before, so, yeah, and always pretty good, enlightening stuff. With regard to the No Ink poll books, though, Brad, there were problems in other states, though. I think Georgia, Ohio, and Texas all experienced problems because of the No Ink poll books in this last election, didn't they?
That's correct. Most of the problems that we saw in Texas and Georgia that we saw was based on LNA. So the county did not do their LNA process to make sure the codes were being encoded correctly, and that's an unfortunate problem, but it was something that they did not follow the checklist and guides that we provide. Let's see, and where was the other, the other issue? Oh, Ohio. You are correct. Franklin, Franklin County, Ohio was running, they chose to run on some older hardware. They did not replace their hardware, and so they had, they're a larger county, and they need, need to update their hardware. So there was some, some technical issues there. But that, that was a pretty flawless election outside of a couple of LNA's in Texas and Georgia, and then that hardware issue that we had in Franklin County, Ohio.
Can you just tell me, if I'm a regular voter and I walk into the polling place, what is this, what does the poll book do for me?
It speeds up the process.
By how much? 10 seconds, 30 seconds? I mean, you know, here, you know, I hear this all the time, that it speeds up the process. But I walk in there at my precinct, which I think is 2-15 in Sioux Falls, and it probably took me a minute to check in. The biggest holdup was the lady couldn't get the big pieces of paper to go over the binder hook fast enough, so.
Right, right.
I mean, what are we, are we speeding things up by, what, 10 or 20, 30 seconds, or what?
30, 30 seconds is the average check-in time. That's, that's the average check-in time, so that, that takes into consideration the person who's very slow at it and the person who's very fast at it. Though, the other significant update to going to an e-poll book or a pole pad in this situation is that your pole pad can stay connected throughout the election day and keep updated. So you can process vote-by-mail ballots, early voting records. You can also keep processing, because you can pull files out of the system to see who's checked in on election day. And then the really big, the big winner is, and I come from a county, I worked in a county for several years before, working for No Ink, and in 2016, we, we rolled out the poll books for the presidential election. Typically, it took us a week to adjudicate at the end of the election, and after the end of the election, we closed out within a day. We adjudicated within a day. That cuts down our temp staff that we have to hire to go through and scan signatures, validate check-ins, and things like that. It's a one-file, pull out, and put into the VR system that really significantly impacts your election speed. For the voter, it does improve speed and time, but for the county is where the, where the real cost benefit is.
Thank you, Brad.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
Madam Chair, it does state here, election support is determined and billed on its own invoice. So how much, how much more additional cost would that be? Is it by the hour we're charged?
That's, that's, so the support is what we were talking about in the beginning there, for me coming onsite, helping you guys. That is billable. We do that, I do that separately, because that is if they chose that they want to have that, or they choose that they don't want to have that. So it is basically, it's 240 per pole pad that covers you guys from beginning to end. So when I start training all the way till after the election, so if I'm down here five times, that's, that's covered on me. So it's $240 per pole pad, so if you had 45 pole pads, it's $9,000 for an election, roughly. I think I'm doing the math kind of right in my head. And then that is, but that covers you on the training, that covers you on election day, that covers you if we have two, three people down here, whatever it needs. And that's, that's part of what I, that's the part that I take care of for you guys, too, so.
Any other questions?
So the cost, you said the cost to do training is 245 per pole pad?
So we, I rolled the training, the onsite support, your setup, you know, if you have to come down and set the pole pads up, do anything like that, any problems, whatever. That part from when we started getting them ready till after the election is $240 per pole pad for the whole thing.
So the first time we do training for our, our volunteers who man the precincts, it's basically going to be $240 per person?
No. I mean, it's $240 for everything. I train them, and then if I have to set up the pole pads the next day, I'm doing that. If I'm doing onsite support the next day, that's all included in that.
And how many pole pads would the county have?
I don't remember, Sheri. 40 pole pads, roughly.
So 240 times 40, basically?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yep. And that is a cost that, that again, we, we aim to basically train the trainer eventually so that she can go ahead and take care of 99.9% of this stuff on her own. And then if they do want us down there on election day, we would adjust that number, obviously, adjust that number just to be here for election day to help, or just to help with training, or whatever they would want from there, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Sheri. Sheri, have you run any numbers to see if this would be a cost savings in the long run for the county?
Over time, it would be a cost savings. Currently, it takes Kayla probably about two to three weeks to scan the, and update the voter history. So with her wage, you know, it gets, and we've hired part-time people to come in and help scan. This would be a transfer of information, so it would cut that down to 24 hours.
Would it get rid of the need to have extra people come in to help scan those in?
Yeah, yep.
Do you know what it would save? I mean, have you?
I mean, probably, per election, it's going to be at least $5,000 to $6,000, just for the scanning part of it. The efficiency that's going to be at the poll place, we probably would be able to, some of the precincts where we have five people, we could drop that down to four people. The precinct worker is 200 and some dollars. 175 per election, per polling place that would need the five people. I think we could drop it down to four people with this.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? What's the, what are thoughts of the board? Do we want to vote on this today?
Madam Chair, I have one question for Sheri. Hi, Sheri. How is it, easy is it getting to get people to actually work at these polling places? There were, there for a while, I know it was difficult. Has that gotten better at all?
Surprisingly, it's fairly easy to get people to work. Even during COVID, it was, I mean, there was a little bit of a problem, but considering we're in a pandemic, it...
It wasn't.
It wasn't that bad, huh?
So that has kind of gone away. There for a while, I know it was trying to pull people out of the woodwork to...
Yeah, and that was mostly last year. Otherwise, the six years that I've been here, we usually have them set up, you know, and ready to go within a couple of weeks.
Madam Chair, I, I like the, I, first of all, I like technology. I love technology, actually. And what I don't like, though, is some of the problems that we have with technology, especially when it comes to voting today. In the last election, it was a nightmare around the country, multiple jurisdictions. Eight counties in South Dakota were affected by the B-poll, poll pads, unfortunately, that had a problem. I like the idea of speeding things up for the auditor's office. That is a fantastic idea, especially the data transfer. If I could take this proposal and do away with the pole pad, and like do whatever you all are talking about with the data transfer piece of this, I would, I would support that. What I don't like about the pole pad issue, though, is that the data can be seen real time as voting is happening, and I know it's not going to happen in our county. But what if you had some kind of, you know, somebody was monitoring the data real time? Well, they could tell campaigns who has voted and who hasn't voted, and that would be putting your thumb on the scale. And I'm not saying our people would do that, but it does leave open the possibility for providing that information. And there are other jurisdictions where that allegation has been made, and that's, that's arisen. I don't know if that's specifically with regard to No Ink technology, but that allegation is out there in other jurisdictions. So I don't like that piece. I like, yeah.
Can I answer just one thing on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so if we leave the pole pads dead, which means they're not hooked to the internet, we get everything you want without having an ability, so.
Yeah, because I think here in South Dakota, we actually have a specific statute that says you can't count, you can't start counting the votes until after the election is over. And the whole reason for that is because you don't want to be able to unfairly, whoever you are, political party, candidate, whatever, unfairly know who's been voting, who hasn't been voting. So I don't like that piece. I appreciate what Sheri is saying, though, about the security and confidentiality piece. The, we sat here at the last election, and I think... The, uh, we sat here at the last election and I think every single commissioner congratulated Sheri on running a great election in Lincoln County. She jumped in, it was like out of the fire and into the, out of the frying pan and into the fire because she had taken over for Marlene Suede, and she had done so right before the election had started, or not started, right before the election had started. And there were like no readily identifiable problems stated. You know, the public, nobody's come to me and said, geez, I had to wait at the polling location for, for an hour. There were no long lines. I think we run elections in South Dakota really, really well. And I think we also have a statutory scheme that, that makes running elections really good in terms of the, uh, integrity of the process. I know that in a few jurisdictions, the poll book issue, no offense, Dustin, um, because I know this is your, this is your business, I know, because you and I, yeah, we, we talked about. I just, I think it's a so, uh, solution in search of a problem. I don't think we had any problems in the last election that we need poll books to fix. I like the idea of low-tech, safe elections where we have election integrity. And, um, if we had a much larger population base, and maybe we're actually getting there, I don't know. Maybe we would need these in order to speed our lines along. You know, you watch Fox News or CNN, you see these lines of people wrapped around the buildings. That's not in South Dakota. That's not in Sioux Falls. That's like in Atlanta and Dallas and LA where we see those problems. But we don't have them here just because we don't have the population density issues that others have to deal with. Sheri, you brought up an interesting point at the last meeting. You mentioned the term voting centers. Maybe, and this has to be articulated. I don't know about voting centers, but people have brought the issue to me of, well, geez, if I'm working up in Sioux Falls, can't, why can't I just go vote in a different precinct? Okay? That's another discussion that we need to have to make voting easier. Because what if I'm down in the southern end of the county for the whole day on election day? Well, why can't I just walk into any voting center and vote? Or, excuse me, any precinct and vote? And then my vote would be counted in the precinct that I live in, but it would be cast in the county or in the precinct that I was physically present in. That's another discussion. And this technology may help enable that, I don't know. But if that, if this technology will enable that, let's also combine that with a, with the fuller, broader discussion of what a voting center looks like, what that concept would look like for Lincoln County. I think in the northern end of the county especially, we have very highly mobile population. Hey, why can't I vote on the, on the west side of town versus the east side, et cetera, et cetera? So I think that's a discussion worth having. Today, I'm not ready to say I'm for this, um, but, uh, it's going to take, take me a little more to get me there, um, given the problems that they experienced in Georgia, Texas, Arizona, or, uh, Georgia, Texas and Ohio, as well as the eight counties here in South Dakota last year. But can we get there? Yes. Do we need more discussion about this? Do we need to make voting easier for people? And sa, or not safer, but more secure? Because that's what we want, you know? We want elections that are, that are secure and people can have trust and confidence in. So whatever we can do to make that happen, we need to do that. So today, I'm a no, but you can, you may be able to get me there in the future.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair, I, I agree that, uh, I remember being here two days after the election last fall and how well our election went and the compliments that went out and, uh, so on. So I, I know that the current system seems to be working very well, but, uh, definitely something to think about here in the future.
I'm quiet.
You're never quiet, Jim. What do you think?
Well, all I'm going to say is, uh, we got to, we, we, we've had very good success. We've had high degree of credibility, but when you look at the future, Jim was just here and didn't give us, uh, the numbers. But I think we got to anticipate, um, what we're going to be voting like when we're sixty-five, seventy or seventy-five thousand people and make preparations now to accommodate that.
Well, I'd entertain a motion one way or the other. I guess the motion I'd ask for is to approve and then we can vote accordingly.
Is there, is there amongst the commission? Is there a, um, belief that if we were to, Commissioner Aaron said he was not ready at this time? Well, what kind of time, Commissioner, are you thinking to you would be comfortable one way or the other?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. It, it's not an issue of like thirty or sixty days. It's not a time element, per se. It's an institutional change element. And that is, um, are we going to have a discussion about poll centers? Because this is the gateway technology that allows that. So that's a discussion that needs to be had. So that plan would need to be flushed out. But also, um, uh, at this point in time, there's just too many problems with this technology in too many states. And also, we're already voting. The last election that we had, um, uh, here in Lincoln County, we already had sixty-five or seventy thousand people voting in it. And we did fantastic. And that's because South Dakota has a very well-designed system that can scale up very easily, where we don't need to. See, we're entering a new technology that creates new problems, new technology to us that enters new problems that can occur. We don't need that problem. We had a fantastic election in 2020 in terms of the mechanics and how it was run by the auditor's office. All I'm seeing in these other jurisdictions is more problems, not more solutions. And here in South Dakota, um, thing, we have a great system. Let's not change it. Let's not fool with it. And like I said, if you could take this data transfer piece and, and separate that from the use of the poll book system, uh, I would support that. I don't know if that's a possibility, though. I mean, there, there were problems in these other states where people who were registered to vote, the poll books said they weren't registered. They had to file provisional ballots, they were treated differently. When I walk into my polling location right now, and I live in a very heavily populated precinct, two dash fifteen, it's maxed out. There's houses everywhere, schools are already built, it can't expand any further. I walked in and it took me a minute, less than a minute, to get checked in and vote, and I was out of there. I even took my eleven-year-old son with me. Went smooth, went real easily. So I don't, I don't, just technology, purchasing technology for the sake of having technology is not the reason we should do this. If we had long lines out the building and wrapped around the corner, yeah, then we'd have to take a look at this. But we don't have any of those issues here.
Madam Chair? If you wouldn't mind if somebody would like to speak to some of the concerns that have been raised. I do like the idea that this might save taxpayer money and hate to completely shut it out, but it looks like we're, we're going that way. I was hoping that if they share with us, you know, you're obviously aware of some of the problems, as we are.
Yeah, and I think Brad.
And you identified some of it was hardware, some of it was, how do we reassure our taxpayers that it's, if, um, issues are not going to rise up in our county because of the, the pads?
Brad, do you want to cover that first, or?
Yeah, I just want to be recognized. So I apologize. Being on the phone is a little bit hard to tell if I can talk or not. Um, so the commissioner that brought up the concerns, I, I actually hear him and, and can understand his, his concerns and, and can val, you know, take a lot of value in that. You guys had a flawless 2020, why, why update? And so then you have to look at your, uh, want to grow, which is the Vote Center model. You cannot stay on paper-based if you, if you want a Vote Center model. And with the total vote system, if you did have problems, that's a concern. Poll pad is already a proven, successful product out there in nine hundred jurisdictions. Uh, the three that you keep referring to, Ohio, Georgia and Texas, it wasn't the whole state of Georgia, it wasn't the whole state of Texas, which we almost have, we have all of Georgia, we have almost all of Texas, and we have half of Ohio. So we're talking about three instances and very specific e, issues that were, that came about. So let's look at the value part of it. And again, I, I'm not a salesperson, I'm the support side of this, but in 2016, when I was with the county, we went from a thousand poll workers in the lead-up to the 2016 presidential election to roughly around six hundred because of the poll pad's efficiencies, the ability to, uh, help streamline the process, the need for people in that problem. So that saves us a large amount of money right off the bat. Forty percent in our, in our payroll alone for election day. Uh, and then again, you brought up a great point. If you guys go to Vote Center, maybe this becomes a, a product that you guys are interested in. Again, that is an awesome idea, you know, maybe explore that conversation wholeheartedly and then, and then come back to the table when you want to do Vote Center model, because that is a holistic change across your voting system. You'll have to make sure you have the ballots at all of your Vote Centers, and I don't know what voting, uh, machines you guys use. But I, I really do think that you guys brought up some great points. But again, Poll Pad is a solution, uh, to a problem that's out there. If, if you do run connected, it gives you a peek into that polling site, uh, to know what's going on, that it's at least up and running. We can, we can streamline down the views in e-pulse, which is our backend system, to not allow your office officials to see who voted, so you can have that concern met, that security concern that you had earlier brought up. We can streamline it down just to show polling locations, what poll pads are on, whether they're connected. And then, uh, like I think Sheri said earlier, I apologize, uh, she said that, um, we can not, run them not connected, and then no one has an idea of what ones, uh, what people have checked in. Uh, again, that's the versatility of the poll pad, and that is the unique, uh, problem that we can solve.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
To Sheri?
I would like one last time to have Sheri express her feelings toward this as she runs our elections. You've heard a lot of arguments both sides of this. Just kind of seeing if your decision has been changed at all as to whether or not you think this is a route that we should go toward our elections.
Well, with hearing all the concerns from Joel and everybody else, um, I still think that it's a route we could go. I, if we do eventually talk into Vote Centers, we're definitely going to need it. Do we want to have the technology now so that we're used to it before we move into that? Maybe. That way, we're familiar with them before we get to that point. And if Vote Center is going to happen in the next couple of years, I don't know. It's, you know, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so you're still recommending at this point to proceed with the pads?
Yeah. Uh, what I would do, though, is I think I would, you know, to take the worry or, um, the internet security, I'd run them dead without the internet connection.
Thank you, Madam Director. Madam Chair, if you're ready for a motion, I will to get this off the table, uh, give you, provide an emotion to approve the purchase of the, uh, pads.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second for a discussion.
Any further discussion?
I could teeter-totter both ways on this. I'm going to lean to following what our election coordinator is, is asking us, and that's my persuasion, uh, decision here today, so.
That's, that's the way I'm leaning, but I'm, I am on the fence. These issues in these other counties, how is that problem alleviated? Is it all human error?
So, um, in Franklin County, Ohio, is the only one that wasn't human error in, in the totality of the system. So they load their pads at such an early date because they're such a large county that it's a technology problem that they had to solve. And we, we've just recently solved that for them. They've had two, uh, smaller elections to test out the new solution with the newer hardware, new iPads, and they are running, uh, a pilot program for connectivity as well, um, in Ohio. So that, that one, the other two were LNA processes. They did not go through the proper LNA process, just like with voting machines, you need to run a small LNA process checklist. And in Spalding County, Georgia, that, that I think you're referencing, they did not run that LNA process. And so that, that brought up a large, um, amount of concern and actually issues on election day. And then same thing with Texas. I'm not as familiar, but I know they had some, some ballot codes that they were concerned about and that weren't pulling up the right ballot code because they did not do their LNA process.
I guess, I don't know what LNA process, I don't know what that is.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Logic and accuracy, just to make sure the machines do what they're, what they're supposed to. So in Georgia, they encode a card from the poll pad that goes into their voting machine and then, uh, works with Dominion and encodes the Dominion machine. They did not validate that it was working prior to the election setup, and so when they got onto election day, the machines would not encode. Same thing was within Texas. They didn't, they program a barcode at the bottom of their receipt printer, and that encodes a barcode that, uh, allows the express vote machine to work, and they did not, uh, logic and accuracy or test it to make sure it was working. It wasn't a failure on our system, it was a failure on them to check the data that they had loaded into the system.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner?
I know we're talking about Georgia and Texas. I'm more concerned about probably locally. You mentioned that, uh, the election, last election was utilized by the Sioux Falls School Board, right? And Minnahaia County, you know, has had some glitches. I don't know what's done to any machine, maybe it's due to, uh, a previous auditor. But what's been the experience of that school district? Because that was a, that's a pretty significant little vote there. How'd that work out?
We've been, uh, Bev Chase has been running the poll pads, uh, I guess as long as I can remember, I think 2012, I've helped her support them. She's been in the Vote Center environment since then. Uh, we've, oh, they've all been live. We've actually done and went through three different types of poll pads for her. And, uh, these ones were the, we tried these ones out, she was interested in trying the Know Ink poll pads. And so we came in, we ran her as a pilot program, and, um, we did, uh, we helped with the training, we helped with the setup, we helped with the, the support on election day. And, uh, we, I, in all honesty, I have not had a major concern in the Sioux Falls School District election. I've never, uh, we've had, I've, I've had staff of like ten people there in case there were issues. And, uh, with this last one, I was there. And I knew that I, it, the confidence in the technology and how the training process and how the setup goes and how the, as Brad was talking, the LNA goes, make sure that we check and double-check and triple-check our, our stuff. It comes out at the end of the day, you know, chance favors your prepared mind, so you make sure you're always prepared for the worst, but you know if you've done your work right, everything's going to go correctly. You know, and if you're in a Vote Center environment, too, the nice thing about the Vote Center environment or the live environment is that you can, uh, I mean, it was, one of the things that I noticed that I really liked was I had a, a gentleman on the backend at Know Ink, and he would call me and say, hey, uh, a printer's unplugged at a certain location. The poll worker didn't know that. I would buzz over there, flip their printer on or plug it in, or they hit the switch on the, um, uh, on one of their, uh, surge protectors. We had one that had a, uh, had a yellow light and wasn't charging, that's because the, the lady had unplugged it with her foot. So we went over there, plugged it in for her, and away we went. So it's noticing those little problems, especially through a live environment. I mean, if you want, if, if you test them in a dead environment, which is perfectly fine, too, you can get that feel for them when you roll into that live environment, like in the Sioux Falls school election. We, uh, it's, it's been, basically, it's been a really good thing to learn. There are other counties in the state that have used poll pads, not the Know Ink poll pads, but poll pads in a Vote Center environment. Uh, I know Brown County has, um, Yankton has, Hughes County has, um, Hyde Potter, Sully County have. So there have been, they use that Vote Center like you were actually describing, that, uh, it makes it more convenient, you can go to these places, but I don't know, I, I can't You can go to these places, but I don't know, I, I can't attest to ballot cost or anything like that if it's going to cost more to put more ballots at a certain location. But I have seen, uh, you know, my dad lives in Sioux Falls, and he is, uh, he's a physician there. And what he does is if he can't vote on his way to work and he misses, if he has the wrong precinct, that vote's going to be missed. If he could go to a place that he wants to vote and vote, and, um, he's, he's gonna, you're gonna get, capture that vote. You're gonna get him to vote. But I'm not, I'm not trying to push you guys towards Vote Centers one way or the other. I just have seen how that convenience factor works in the counties that I've supported in South Dakota. And I have been doing that in the Vote Center environment, uh, in South Dakota for up to, I think we're almost on 10 years now, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and Commissioner Schmidt, just so you know, the, the software crashed in 2020 in Hughes, Brown, Brookings, Yankton, Sully, Hyde, and Potter Counties. Those were eight counties where in 2020, the auditors all had to revert back to the old fashioned book and binder method. Now granted, that was B Pro technology.
Yeah, and they were, they were directly connected. So, there was not, uh, from what I understand, I can attest to it again, but from what I understand, there was no localized database. So, having a, uh, our, our PollPads, there is, uh, there's a significant red cloud on, on those that tells you if they're connected or not. Um, one of the things that you'll notice is if they're, if they're dead, you still can keep on voting. That's one of the things when we train people. If that cloud turns red, just keep on trucking. If it is, if you're in a live environment, we'll get them, somebody will come there, you know, if Sherri or one of the, whoever was there would go there, get the hotspot turned back on or get them back on the internet, and that data would transmit back up to there. And that is, you know, one of the things we do run into is, um, if you have that, that interconnectivity all the time, you can keep an eye on that. If you're dead, it's, you come back and we, and we're doing the export then at that point on your secured internet here.
And then I think out in Rapid City and Pennington County, they went down on their poll books on Election Night 2020. And they had to extend their polls for another hour and 45 minutes. And they had to go back to book and binder as well.
Yep. And I, uh, you know, the, the, the underlying problem, from what I understand on that is, you, you, we, we know we can't rely on Wi-Fi or the internet or anything. And that, when you don't have a, a good connection, that, that can cause those problems. So, having that, that base where you can actually, you have that localized database, everything that you need to conduct your election sits on that device. The internet's kind of just, or the cloud is just kind of the icing on the cake. So, that your reporting mechanism is more accurate, your data's getting there quicker. Sherri's, Sherri's night goes a lot better at the end of the night. So, you can keep track of that stuff better. So, thank you guys.
You know, Madam Chair, you, you sit here and you listen to concerns that Commissioner Aaron's has brought up. You listen to the auditor who has, you know, pluses and minuses. Boy, I, I don't know, this is something that, um, the old saying for me was, you know, when in doubt, stay out. Well, I'm not staying out, but I'm just wondering, is this something that we need? We have an election coming up here, uh, what, uh, July 27th, I think. Um, would this be something that would be utilized with this technology? Or would we be using what we have currently? I mean, not that that's germane, it doesn't change, but I'm just curious as to, uh, the, the implement, implementation time.
If we could get the agreement to sign up for this, we could get the PollPads to use it at this election. And I think at this election, I would probably have them be dead PollPads, where, which means they're just not on the internet. That would give us a fill for them, although we would already be signed into the contract. We'd be getting them for the next primary, but they do have the PollPads that we would have available for this election.
I'm wondering if Know Ink is willing to do a trial run with Lincoln County for May 27 without a contractual agreement, um, provide the technology and let everybody get hands on as part of a trial run. Well, yeah, you'd, you know, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, and I'd have, I'd have to discuss that with the powers that be.
Well, I ain't putting you on the spot anyway, but yeah.
I'd have to discuss that with the powers that be, but they, uh, Bev's, like I said, was a pilot up there in, in, uh, the, for the school district. So, if, if you, if you, I can, uh, take this back to the people and see what they want to do, if they'd want to do a, a pilot type program with you guys for that. Because again, it'd be, if we were in a dead environment, it would be a lot more work here, a lot less of the, you know, having to worry about synchronization and stuff like that. But, or if you want to try them in a live environment, you sure can.
Well, we'll have to see. My understanding is the same with regard to Bev Chase is that was a pilot program as well.
Commissioner, you were reading my mind, because I was going to ask a question if we, because you know, when you buy something, I think Commissioner Gibbons and I collaborate on this. If you're going to go out and buy yourself a new tractor or something, you usually get about, uh, time to test it out, to see whether it fits your expectations and all this other kind of stuff. So, I would encourage you to, uh, offer to Lincoln County that trial run to see whether this really does perform to our expectations or to our auditor's expectations. And you have kind of a convenient thing to go here, because this is an election to over, or to overturn our zoning, uh, amendment that we did. So, it isn't a complicated an election, it's just a yea or nay, so to speak. So, I, I think that's a golden opportunity for you to demonstrate, uh, to, uh, I think the commissioners and to our auditor, that this is a, a good system and one that we should invest in.
I'll discuss it with them, let's just know, or let Sherri know.
So, with that, then I-
Uh, can, can-
Go ahead, Brad.
I'm sorry, can I, can I, okay, thank you. Um, the pilot, would that be a full 40-pad pilot? Or would that be just a single polling location pilot that you'd want to run? Just, just for air information.
It'd be the full 40, I think, Brad, that's what it would be.
Okay, I just wanted to get that note down, just, uh, Dustin, so we could get that squared away when we went to Kevin, so, okay.
Commissioner, Commissioners, and, um, again, I, I, I'm relying on the, our auditor who runs the elections for making decisions, but I have all the same concerns. If they would agree to the, uh, the trial run, if it does go flawless, would we be willing to then enter into the, a contract to purchase it? So, they'd have an incentive to, um, to actually do this trial run with us?
I think it's just like when you buy a tractor. You don't say, I'll buy the tractor, but only if I get to drive it first. You say, I want to drive the tractor, then I'll tell you whether I want to buy it or not.
Yeah, that might work on tractors, I had no idea how it would work on these pads.
Well, I, I can speak to that. We've, we've done zero, zero dollar, dollar leases basically as a pilot program. Uh, some states require them and things like that, so we can definitely work with that. Uh, I will, Dustin will take that back to our team and see if we can get that accomplished in that timeframe.
Well, that would be an excellent option for us.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to prove it to you guys, that it is a working system. I know we've had some, some concerns about other states, but it is, it is a great system. I wouldn't stamp my name behind it, and I wouldn't have come from a county to this. So, I'm excited to, to win you guys' business in this way if we can.
With that, Madam Chair, instead of voting yea or nay on this, I'd actually move to table.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
I'll, I'll second that, because I-
I, I, I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Aaron's. Sean.
We had a motion on the floor though, we'd have to withdraw that first.
Not on a table.
No, we don't, we're tabling.
We're tabling, okay.
Sean, we can call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Thank you. Next item. Sherri.
So, um, we have talked with Jesse about scheduling a bus tour of the county. Jesse's here to speak on it. Um, he was thinking August 10th. It would be directly after the commission meeting, and then I'll let him take it from there.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, good morning, Commissioner Jesse Fonker, 610 Part T Drive, Hartford, South Dakota, Executive Director of the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. Uh, we, we've had this county tour in the northern part of our area for quite a few years, and it seems to have been a, a successful venture there. We want to, in turn, start this tour here in Lincoln County. And, uh, the, the point of the tour is to, to bring you around to the communities, uh, Lincoln County and to show you some of the development there from agriculture to industrial development to some of the residential and commercial development happening there. And also, along the way, maybe look at areas that might be of concern to you. So, what we do in other, in the other county, we, uh, we, we get the bus, we, uh, wait for the commission meeting to adjourn, and then we get on the bus, you, you, uh, reconvene, and then we, uh, we go around the county for about four to five hours.
Thoughts?
Madam Chair, I sit on the board of, uh, the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, which was previously the Lincoln County Economic Development Association. The bus tour went fantastic up there, Commissioners liked it. And Jesse and I had talked about doing this. So, you know, there's a lot of buy-in from both the businesses, I think, as well as decision policymakers. I can't do August 10th, I'm on the family vacation from August 7th through the 15th. But I don't want that to impact any decisions you've made, so I would fully support that.
And I'm, I'm in the same boat. I'm not around on August 10th, at least not, that, according to my schedule right now. I'm supportive of it, but I just won't be around.
In the past, we've had, um, I think we did this a few years ago. It's very difficult to find a date where everybody can attend.
Definitely.
I would, I would support, um, Jesse and I have talked about this on the 10th. I think it's, uh, imperative though that we do understand all the growth that we do have, which is going around, but if the majority of you can't make it on the 10th, I suppose we can find an alternate date.
Yeah, with a, with a 24th or a 31st, I pointed out the 31st work. Uh, we could also push to maybe September, October, if, if that would be any easier in your schedules. Uh, you know, usually do this, we do this in May up north, and that seems to be an okay time because folks are still around. You know, we live in South Dakota, we want to get out and enjoy the sun while we, while we have it. So, perhaps August might not be the best time for this as well. Uh, we can certainly look at September, October, if, if the, if the Commissioners feel that that might be a, an easier time to work into their schedules.
For me personally, when school's back into session, it's perfect.
We could look at perhaps that, um, and I apologize, Sherri hadn't had a chance to talk about this at all yet, about alternative dates in September. Uh, but we could perhaps look at September 7th or 21st. The 21st would be the third Tuesday in September. Would that be an o- okay time, or, or does the commission prefer not to, uh, have commission business on, on, on that?
All those dates work for me personally, you know, I'm looking at my calendar, all those dates work for me.
What date were you looking at?
I was looking at the 7th or 21st, the 21st, there's not a commission meeting.
Of what month?
This would be September.
All right.
The 7th's the day after Labor Day, correct?
That would be correct.
I'm fine with either of those dates. Myself. Well, actually, yeah, either one would be fine.
Maybe the 21st, I mean, go with that, since there's not a commission meeting that day, and we can just kind of smooth through the tour and maybe make it a little bit shorter at the end versus going all the way to the end, or of, uh, end of the day.
You're just going to have to pick a date.
Okay, 21st it is, September 21st, mark your calendars, details will be forthcoming. Uh, we will have, lunch will be provided by one of, uh, the businesses that we, uh, go to visit. And, uh, if you have any ideas, any things that you think the commission would like to see, please feel free to reach out to me, want to make sure that this, uh, this tour of the county that we hope to do annually is well worth your time and staff's time as well, because we do invite the, uh, department heads to come with us. And anybody else you feel would be beneficial to be on that tour. We also invite some of our board members and community members too. Uh, and the idea of this tour is to get you out in the communities and, and talking to the people and, and seeing, uh, what's, what's happening in this great county.
Yeah, I, besides your department heads and your county officials, I'd like to see the elected officials, uh, as well.
Okay.
That are representing the county.
Sure.
And, and Jesse, I think it's also important for some of the other leadership in Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. So, that the other commissioners and department heads here in the county could meet them.
Absolutely.
Because I think they really don't have opportunities for that kind of interaction.
Absolutely, it'd be fantastic.
What time would you want to start?
I would say probably 9:00 AM. And we can figure out a, a starting location, uh, soon, you know. In Minnehaha County, we, it's easy because already it's parked at the county commission building, and we just hop on the bus afterwards, but we can either meet, maybe, uh, we'll talk more about that and get details forthcoming.
For the record, Jesse, that's also Peace Day.
Perfect.
There you go.
Gosh, you know, my, uh, my newest employee is a Nobel Peace Prize scholar from Oslo, so we can talk about peace.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, the 21st, we do not have a commission meeting then?
That's correct.
That's correct, we will be.
Now you kind of do.
That Sherri tells us we need to.
Is that going to work?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Will it work? Budget? It'll work? Okay.
All right, thank you, Commissioner, appreciate your time, and thank you for all you do for our, for our region.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
All right, we've got some first readings. Item three, who wants to handle that one? Mr. Golden, your name is on the agenda.
So, this is a first reading for a proposed ordinance on medical marijuana. It is also possible that if you wanted to include the Amendment A for recreational marijuana, um, we could adapt it to that. Uh, there are several decisions that the commission needs to make at the public hearing as far as cost, number of locations, um, if you want to add any additional regulations. Under the current medical marijuana statute that's going to go into place on July 1st, the counties have the ability to issue a license. You can control some time, place, and manner, um, under the licensing system or under planning and zoning for the ordinances. So, this is a, uh, attempt to go ahead and answer some of those questions that, um, the industry is probably going to want answered, which would be, where can you place these facilities, how many? Because under the current setup as it is, if the counties don't regulate the numbers when the applications go to the state, then the state will be granting them. So, that means that the numbers of, um, locations here would be unregulated. Uh, they have until October 29th to go ahead and proponent all of these state rules at that point. And then I believe in November is when they're going to start allowing cars to be issued by physicians. So, this is, um, this regulation, this ordinance, I can go down through it if you would like, or I can just give you the general overview, which is to set up a scheme that's very similar to alcohol. So, it would be a licensing scheme in the county where you would have the control of the numbers and types of reg, or marijuana businesses that Lincoln County would allow. It would allow for a license and for some control over who can go ahead and operate the businesses and who can be employed and who has access to it. So, that is the, um, attempt with this ordinance here.
Bill, there's, this, uh, understand what we're trying to do, everybody. It seems to me every county has taken a different approach, you know. Minnehaha, Minnehaha County has, uh, put out something, they were on pause. I, I think, uh, Yankton County has put one out, Union County has put one out, and there's a, a number of counties that have, uh, written something. But it seems to me that what we're dealing with right now with medical marijuana is one aspect. But the other gorilla in the room is the other part of using on cannabis. You know, if, if you have recreational things and the Supreme Court does approve that, that changes the complexion of what you would have for your medical marijuana. And what kind of concerns me on some ways is they, I don't know if they'll have that decision prior to July 1st or- prior to July 1st or not, I don't know. Reports said they could do it any Thursday, I think when they meet, they could, maybe it's this Thursday, I don't know. But when you, if you put out your ordinances for medical marijuana, and there is no decision on the Supreme Court, and a business comes in and wishes to establish their venue or out to that, and medical marijuana is what they based it on, and our ordinances, and recreational marijuana comes along, we have to change what we have for medical marijuana. Because, I mean, that can affect the business climate on this thing. And I really, you know, it's kind of a guessing game on so many things. And when can they actually start dispensing this product, when can they all do that? So many unknowns, and yet, the county really doesn't have too many things that we can control. I mean, you can have a litany of tests, but Councilman Nicer and I spent time talking about what it is that local government really can control. But we have to have something in place, correct? By, and if you don't, what's the penalty?
If there isn't, there's the concern that individuals could go ahead and set up and start to operate and establish a claim for being grandfathered in in the way they are going to operate, or their claims that they filed their applications with the state, even though the state doesn't have rules and stuff in place. It really is to grant certainty to people going forward, so they have an idea of where Lincoln County stands or where the other county stands. I do know that there has been an ordinance passed around that would require an application from the state prior to applying for anything within the county, which in essence pushes everything off until October 29th. And so, that was another, that's another approach and another option that the counties are talking. I mean, there's a task force that's being attempted to be set up. This has been shared with Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls, and anyone else who would like a copy of the ordinance. This initially started out, out of U County, that they had initially prepared this, and I wouldn't have, what's been added to it is the licensing scheme, which does give the county some control over where it's going to be. It allows for a public hearing prior to being issued. And then it allows also for a little bit of control over who's going to access the building and who can be employed and what security concerns can be addressed. So, no, there is no certainty, and nobody's actually agreeing on exactly how we should go forward on any of this. I had heard from a few of the board members who, and this is the reason it's coming forward, is this would be a proposed licensing scheme and something the county could do to address those concerns. The other approach would be a very simple one-page. We're not going to accept or move forward with anything until the state has an application process. And even if you, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
Even if you adopted this, we may have to turn around and revisit it. If the state adopts rules that this conflicts with, we'd have to amend it and fix it.
Bill, I want to thank you and your office for taking a good first stab at this. I think it shows that Lincoln County is being proactive and wanting to adopt the will of the voters. Like you said, time, place, and manner are the real big issues we have to grapple with here. You know, from my point of view, this is, at this point in time, this is simply the, us adopting an ordinance with regard to medical cannabis, which is medicine. You know, I'm putting the recreational cannabis issue to the side right now. We just don't know when our Supreme Court is going to rule, and we don't know how they're going to rule. And, you know, personally, I do not, because medical cannabis is medicine, and because it's going to be well-regulated and issued by a doctor who has to give you permission to use it, just like there's no caps on pharmacies, I don't support caps on dispensaries or manufacturing or cultivation. I think the free market will determine what the caps are. But I did see here in your first stab that there's a lot of blank lines there under the caps. I'm concerned that licensing caps may also open the county up to potential litigation as well. And then, of course, it always opens us up to, you know, accusations of corruption, cronyism, unfair process, all of that. And I think I did read an article by Joe Snievy in the Argus Leader recently that talked about how caps on liquor licenses are holding some entrepreneurs back. With all that said, though, I do think there's quite a few reasonable regulations you've put in here, and I think it's just pretty common sense stuff. In fact, I would go even further with the regulation of some of these things. But I think also something we need to consider is an annual license renewal fee as well. You know, medicine in South Dakota is not subject to sales tax licensing. You can't, you can't put sales tax on buying penicillin at the pharmacy. But I think according to the Department of Revenue here in South Dakota, they are going to classify medical cannabis not as traditional medicine, but they are, there's going to be a sales tax revenue component to it. Counties don't get that revenue, and you know, for the last, we've heard it for 40 years, right? Legalize it and tax it, right, that's what they've always said about marijuana. Well, now is that point in time where counties get to make that decision. And it sounds like the state is going to tax it, legalize it and tax it. But I think what we need to consider from a county point of view, and you took a good first stab at this, is there's going to be some dollar amount put on the license fee, but we've also got to look at an annual renewal fee as well. And thankfully, we have a statute that allows us to consider that. Because for so long, people have said, well, geez, you know, counties, we've got a state's attorney and a sheriff's department that we've got to fund, but, and I think I've got the right statistic here, I've seen in the past, you know, 60% of some crimes have an alcohol component or a drug component to them. Well, we've never been able to, other than on the liquor license, that's the only way we've been able to capture revenue in order to have to deal with some of the social costs that come about from that. Well, we as a county now are in a unique position where we can actually attempt to recover some of the potential social costs or regulatory costs that may come about as a result of having to send a building inspector out there who needs enhanced knowledge of how fire suppression systems work in marijuana cultivation or manufacturing process. And so, an annual renewal fee is going to help us recover some of those costs at the county. And I would think that there's going to be other regulatory costs as well. So, you know, that's something that I'm going to be looking for is the annual renewal fee component to be put in there. Now, if this commission, for whatever reason, would entertain the idea of caps, I do think it's going to be important then, and I understand why you drafted it the way you did. But if we do consider caps, I think we're probably going to have to enter in more regulatory language as to, you know, how we're going to deal with issuing the licenses and some of that. But I think I understand why you drafted it the way you did at this point, because you just don't know how it's going to fall out from the commission yet, so I get that. But like I said, you know, I think the big, the big issue in here is the caps, and we're only talking about regulating medicine. There's no cap on pharmacies. Pharmacies like Walgreens, I can walk in 24/7. I can walk in on the 4th of July, I can walk in on Thanksgiving. But I did notice here in your first stab, it did say that, you know, federal holidays and some of that are, you know, I know where you're going, I respect it, I disagree with it, I think we, you know, I disagree with the hours. People get off work at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock at night, especially people with chronic healthcare problems, palliative care, end-of-life scenarios are at play here. And so, I do think people are going to need to have access beyond just 6:00 o'clock at night. I think we can probably come to some kind of reasonable regulation with some of that stuff. But it's like a pharmacy, and so, and I did see that the legislature now wants the pharmacy board involved in this process. So, hopefully, we can start to look at medical cannabis through the lens of it being medicine as opposed to gets clouded with the recreational piece. I don't want that to happen for all the people who can benefit from being able to take advantage of a new medicine, so.
Bill, are you, I mean, you wrote this so that we could add in the Amendment A stuff. So, is there a concern that it's going to be a free-for-all with dispensaries under Amendment A? And that's what you're trying to?
There's a licensing component that can be under Amendment A, so if recreational, we can keep them both separate. But if on July 1st, we don't have a Supreme Court decision, we're going to be a little up in the air as far as recreational as well. If they go ahead and they, they strike it down, then it's not an issue. If they don't strike it down, then we're going to have one set of regulations for medical, and then we're not going to have anything for recreational. I would suggest that if you're going to treat one retail facility, you should treat them both the same, probably for the cultivation facilities as well. It would just make sense if you're going to regulate one, that you'd regulate them both. They have the same product, they have the same issues, so I would just treat them the same. Because this is modeled after the statutes that we already have for alcohol, so that's where most of it comes from.
Okay, and then, they haven't set any statutory fee?
That would be set by the commission as far as, there is no fee in statute.
There's no limit to the fee?
No, I, well, you're an attorney, you always know that, yeah. They gave us the old reasonable, so.
Alright.
Representative Nicer told me that North Dakota had established licensing fees of almost $450,000. Is there any, I didn't, all I remember is that was a pretty substantial money to get, because this is going to be, you know, it's going to be a huge revenue source. There's a lot of unintended consequences here with who is going to be the suppliers, who's going to be the, put the money up for the, for the front money to get these things established? Where is that going to come from? Will commercial or state banks want to participate in that? Or will that come from other funding sources? I've got some friends in Colorado who are commissioners there and have great concerns that they're syndicate money that is in back of some of these things, but they have no way of proving that. So, there's a, there's certainly a lot of issues underlying the surface of just the dispensing of this particular product.
One of the things that addresses it in the licensing scheme is that in order to hold the license, a person has to have good moral character. And so, that gives the commission the ability, if you suspect, or we'd have to have proof and go through administrative process. But it would give you a way to remove a license if you had a bad actor. You'd have to have good grounds, they are laid out in there, which would be not following the regulations, multiple violations, criminal violations, not following the Department of Health's regulations. So, it would give the county a way to weed out bad actors if we did come to it, you know. An example would be repeated selling to minors or not protecting it, knowing where their inventory is, so that it's getting out without appropriate safeguards. Those are all things, at least with a licensing scheme, you do have some control over it.
What are the thoughts on adding the Amendment A to this?
I can bring a clause which would just say that if it's passed, that Amendment A would be subject to the same controls and restrictions in this that you can look at at the second reading.
I mean, and obviously, we can amend it after things come down.
Yes.
From the Supreme Court.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, I think, I look at the medical cannabis issue a little bit differently than recreational, just because I view it through the lens of being medicine and distributing it simply on the, or not simply, but on the basis of what a doctor says. I agree that for simplicity's sake, it would be nice to have a nice, simple ordinance that applies to everything, but I think there's a different set of challenges and opportunities that come with recreational cannabis as opposed to medical. Just because you have to get a doctor, licensed doctor in good standing has to give you a prescription. And I may view the procedures for wanting to be able to access medicine differently than what I would view recreational marijuana.
I agree with you on that.
That's just an initial thought.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. The only question, I mean, I would like to see them separated, but right now, we need to get something in place before July 1st if we're going to do something, so, is that?
I could do a separate set for recreational if you'd.
Do we have time to get that done before July 1st?
I don't know if we have enough notice time.
Well, I don't think there's enough notice time, Madam Chair. That's, that's the tough one, right?
Yeah.
Calendar is what the calendar is. Is there, can we take any comfort, though, in hoping or wishing or thinking that the Supreme Court is nowhere near issuing a decision at this point in time?
That's why, that's why I'm wondering if we just add Amendment A for now, and then we can split it out and have two separate ordinances.
I can bring an addendum or an amendment to the ordinance that would have a separate section that would make it apply to recreational marijuana, if it's legal, or their decision, and then we can work on a separate set that we could split off later.
Yeah, I just, you know, even if we added a clause or something in there that stated the commission will hold another hearing on it, or, you know, another process. So, it sends a very strong signal to the public and fellow lawmakers and the industry that what you see for medical cannabis may not be what you see for recreational. Because, for example, in here, Bill, and this is one thing I'm pulling out, the way that you currently have this written is that it precludes or prohibits vertical integration in the medical cannabis industry. And, you know, I'm thinking back to the liquor licenses, right? It was a big fight in the state legislature for craft breweries, especially in Sioux Falls, very popular in southern Sioux Falls, for people to be able to drink beer in the same place where it's manufactured. And, you know, we had to change a whole statutory scheme in order to make that happen. If that happens here, you know, basically, it brings up the issue like somebody asked me. Can I administer or take my medical cannabis in the same place where the brownie is baked, right? Well, under our proposed statute here, you would not be able to do that. You can't manufacture a cannabis-infused product and then ingest it, take it, eat it in the same location. You got to transport it from the manufacturing site to the dispensary site. And I think we, that's a discussion we need to have about, do we want to reduce transportation of the product? Because it is new and people are worried and concerned, I get that part. But in other states, they've done away with the transportation issue, which kind of helps with security, because it is an all-cash business, which is a big concern to law enforcement, and that's what I talk about, the social cost. You know, because you talk about, so, security is going to be very important. I do think we need to have a discussion on this issue of allowing vertical integration, allowing people basically to bake brownies in the same location where you're selling. Personally, I think you ought to be able to do that. It helps out the, with medical cannabis. With recreational, that's a different discussion for right now, but that's where I'm coming from with regard to some of this. from with regard to some of this.
Bill, how much flexibility, if, when, when we're having this joint meeting with the two counties and the city, if you pass, and I'm not opposed to this ordinance at all, but for uniformity's sake, so you have some consistency, we have the ability to amend, to change, to accommodate, if there was a uniform ordinance or a policy that was established as a result of that. We could still certainly accommodate that, correct?
Yes, the reason this is before you now is just strictly a timing issue.
That's correct.
If we had all the time in the world, we wouldn't be doing it this way. The reason I gave you the black folders, there's one here for the public to look at if they would like to, is so that if you want to redline things, if you want to rewrite things, if you want different provisions, you can email me and tell me, and I'll bring you something drafted for you. But the only reason this is before you at the moment is because the July 1st deadline is coming, and if we didn't get it before you today, we couldn't have this conversation. And if you have a different approach, and you want something else, we can certainly, you know, work off of this and add, adapt, or change.
Okay. I'm comfortable.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item. Toby?
This is the first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as Track 2C Kroger's Edition Northwest Quarter, Section 28, T-98 North, R-51 West, from the A-1 Agricultural District to the P.D. Planned Development District, Good Earth Farm, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommends approval, four to one.
Thank you. So the applicant for this item is Jeff and Nancy Kirsten. This property is approximately three miles south of the city of Lennox. Parcel size is approximately 24 acres. The purpose for this application is that the property owners are desiring to expand their agritourism activities on the property. We have worked with the applicants over the last two years to incorporate conditional uses to allow them to do different types of events and sale of product on site, agricultural product on site. They've, their desires in utilizing some existing structures on the property for weddings and events and those different types of activities. They also have identified some outdoor camping and some other types of activities that they have proposed. So staff did draft an ordinance, again, a planned development district is what's proposed. This would rezone it from A-1 Agricultural District to the Good Earth Farm Planned Development District. Again, this would allow a mixture of agricultural uses which currently exist on the property, along with mixed use of commercial-type activities. The commercial-type activities are identified in the ordinance. We've worked with the applicant to identify specifically what uses those are. So it doesn't incorporate all of the uses that are allowed in a typical commercial district, so, you know, so we've limited warehousing, car repairs, and those different types of things would not be allowed. That would be specifically limited to agritourism-type activities. We've also identified some specific regulations for the property, have worked with the applicant on these, they are in concurrence with the additional standards regulations such as hours of operation and other types of uses. They are proposing no additional structures on the property at this time, so staff did not require preliminary plan submittal with this application. But in the future, if they do decide to build additional structures, it would require some additional review from a subdivision standpoint. As mentioned, the Planning Commission did review this application, did recommend approval of it. Today is the first reading, you have scheduled the second reading for your next meeting, which will be on the 22nd. With that, happy to answer your questions that you have for staff.
Any questions for staff? If not, we'll go ahead and move on to item five.
This is the first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as Southwest Quarter, except H-1, Section 17, T-98 North, R-50 West, from the A-1 Agricultural District to the P.D. Planned Development District, I-29 Ag and Industrial Park, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommendation for approval failed, zero to five.
Okay. The applicant for this item is Progressive Ag Holdings LLC. This property, as you can see, is just to the east of the Sioux Falls Regional Livestock Auction Facility. Property size is approximately 157 acres in size. The applicant has submitted an application to rezone the property to a planned development district, specifically the I-29 Ag and Industrial Park. The applicants identified two subareas for the property. Subarea A would be primarily rezoned to commercial-type activities. They do have an existing proposed tenant that would occupy that facility. The proposed tenant currently operates a business out of the town of Hudson. They would be relocating and expanding that existing operation to this site. That's a primarily a warehousing-type, wholesale-type operation. Subarea B would be defined as allowing commercial, I-1 light industrial uses and I-2, which is general industrial-type uses. They don't have any proposed tenants that I'm aware of at this time. But the uses as proposed, we did draft any specific uses for that, so it would just be those underlying districts. So if there was any of those uses that did require a conditional use permit, they would then have to go through the conditional use permit process. There was nothing that was really exempted out of that process. So staff did work with the applicant to draft an ordinance to that effect, identify the uses that would be allowed. Again, Subarea A would be only available for C zoning district, warehousing could exceed 10,000 square feet without a conditional use permit. We did identify some standard regulations such as landscaping and outside storage and lighting, typical type standards that we have on a conditional use permit for a commercial type activity. Subarea B, again, we did identify uses permitted conditional and permissive in the C, I-1 and I-2 districts, and then allowing warehousing to exceed 10,000 without a conditional use permit. Did have some discussion with the applicants, concerns that they had over recommendation number two, which is that there would be a buffer, a landscape buffer surrounding the outer perimeter of the entirety of the property. We clarified to them that, you know, this isn't, this wouldn't be required at the outset of approval, that pending applications that we would receive in the department, we would then require the landscaping to be incorporated into the design and an application with those different types of facilities. As mentioned, the Planning Commission did motion to approve, and then there was all five, I guess, voted against that motion to approve. There wasn't really too much for dialogue at the meeting, except there was some dialogue regarding the, the need that some of these, or that development should be placed within the municipalities as opposed to being out in the rural area. But that was primarily the only discussion at that time. Again, this is the first reading, you've scheduled the second reading for this for the 22nd, your next meeting. And I did reach out to, as we're the city of Worthing, this is outside of their growth area, but they're in close vicinity of this, I did reach out to the mayor and to staff, and I guess identified really no concerns that they had with the application. They were okay with the conditions that were placed, or standards that were placed in the regulations. With that, happy to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff? If not, we'll move on to item six.
First reading for a temporary ordinance regarding the issuance of local medical cannabis establishment permits. The Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero.
So Bill talked a little bit previous, on the previous item, about a licensing scheme would be, would be the draft of that ordinance, which would be a license for medicinal cannabis, medicinal operations in the unincorporated area of the county. This proposed draft addresses the zoning of medical cannabis. And so I presented two versions to the Planning Commission last month. The first version would have been the one that's being promoted by the County Commission Association, South Dakota Municipal League, and South Dakota Planner Association. And that draft, which you've probably all seen, is what they call the pause ordinance. What that essentially does is it would direct our staff to deny all applications that would come into the office prior to October 29th. Now, that ordinance would also require us as a county, though, to establish standards prior to October 29th. But as Bill mentioned, there's really kind of a timing issue with this. The second version that the Planning Commission ultimately recommended is a draft that would take the, the uses that were identified, and it will be the new state law 3420G, which I appreciate the, you know, the State Departments have put that together. Usually, they don't unveil state laws until July 1st, but this has been available for, I believe, a month and a half now. But these specific uses, the manufacturing facility, the testing facility, the cultivation facility, and then the dispensaries. So we've taken those uses and we've put those, how they would apply into our zoning ordinance, or how we would recommend it. And so the first would be Section 303, which is your A-1 Agricultural District, which is our largest district. This would provide that cannabis cultivation facilities or the grow facilities would be a permitted special use in accordance with these requirements identified. Pretty standard-type regulations that they would have to prove, provide proof that they've obtained the registration with the South Dakota Department of Health. The facility would have to maintain and operate in compliance with those, with that license. And then the facility would not be operated within 1,000 feet of a public, private, or parochial school or daycare center. 3420G does provide a setback for 1,000 feet from a, from a private, public school. I've added parochial in there, and then I've also added daycare center into there. Daycare centers in Lincoln County would require a conditional use permit, and they're also not available in the A-1 Agricultural District. They're easier for us to track. We don't track in-home daycares because those are permitted-type uses. And so the next standard would be, is it have to be operated within an indoor, enclosed, secure facility? So again, this would be the grow facility in the A-1 Agricultural District, but it wouldn't be an open grow facility, they'd have to be in some type of a greenhouse or some type of a structure. They'd have to have a disposal plan, or disposal plan that would be approved by myself or a designee, and we would typically work with some type of a consultant on this to determine that. And then there would be no emission of dust, fumes, vapors, or odors that could be smelled outside of the property line. No one under age of 21 would be permitted in the facility. No retails would be allowed on the facility site, and no use on the facility site. And then they would also submit a security plan to myself or my designee that would be in accordance with, if you had a licensing scheme, or with the state, with the state Health Department regulations. And then they would also submit a site plan that would be approved by myself or a designee. And that would just show the floor plan, and that's more, more just so that we can determine building code, or building code eligibility and things like that. Then the next phase would be the medical, the actual dispensary. So this would add a section to the commercial district that would allow the dispensary. Same thing with proof of registration, operation, and setback. Again, it would be in closed facility. This one, we did add an hours of operation that would be 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. Again, some flexibility there. And then disposable, or disposal plan, no emissions, fumes, vapors, and odors. No one under the age of 18 permitted inside the facility. And again, that's because of the ability to obtain the medical, the cannabis license from the state. And so then, no use on the premises, and then same security plan and that. Then the next item would be Section 703, this is a light, I-1 light industrial district, so we would allow the cannabis testing facility, and that's just, that would be probably a separate source company that would do the testing, but it could be a similar source too. And then same types of regulations, it has to have the state licensure, it has to operate within it, same setback, enclosed facility, and then operate, this facility may not operate in the same site as the cultivation or the cannabis product manufacturing facility. I do understand that there is a lot of questions about, about mixing these different types of facilities. What I would say to you is this is a permitted special use, so this would be the standards that they have to prescribe to. If they didn't want to prescribe to these standards, it would flip to a conditional use permit, which would then allow them to go through the public hearing process to obtain that. Same thing, no odor dust, those different types of things, remnants would have to be disposed of according to state, essentially, the State Department of Health. And then the last would be the cultivation facility, we would also allow cultivation facility in the I-1 light industrial district. Again, that's to grow-type facilities, same standards as was in the A-1 agricultural district. And then the last one would be the product manufacturing facility. And so this is where they take essentially the plant, and they, and they essentially burn it into different types of byproducts and different types of things like that. So this would, we would allow within an I-1 light industrial district as a permitted special use as well. No, we've identified no uses that would be allowed in the I-2 general industrial district, primarily because, as you well are aware, we only have three properties in the county that are zoned I-2, and so we just wanted to regulate it through the light industrial district. So what's proposed before you, this is a temporary zoning ordinance under state statute, Chapter 112 for planning and zoning for the county. They allow a board to adopt a temporary ordinance, so if you adopt this, it would be in effect for a year, extendable up to two years, or, you know, you can make permanent or amend it anytime during that process. But this would allow us to establish essentially, July 1st, the citizens of Lincoln County and anyone that would be proposing these type of operations to know kind of where we stand as far as what districts would, would, these uses would be allowable in. And I would say that, I've worked with staff, the last couple of months, I've worked with staff from the city of Sioux Falls and from Minnaya County. We all sort of, from a staff perspective, came up with the same type of really consensus of how we would treat these uses. As you're aware, Sioux Falls has multiple districts, more districts than we have, and so there's a little bit different there. But the next part of this is what, what's really critically important is, is that at some point, we have to come to an agreement with the city of Sioux Falls because we have joint jurisdiction with the city of Sioux Falls. These amendments would only cover the unincorporated area of the county or the 2009 revised zoning ordinance for Lincoln County. These regulations would not cover the joint zoning regulations they have with the city of Sioux Falls, as well as we've proposed no pause or anything to, for that area, for that territory. So we did have a public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting last month with this. We did have testimony at that public hearing, and one of the items that was addressed was a positive benefit, was they, they directed or advised that we should add this number 13, that with the, with the manufacturing facilities, there is some, you know, some hazardous-type situations that could occur. So we added a provision in there that the fire prevention plan and floor plan that'd be submitted to emergency management director for review and approval of that, to ensure that there's some safety mechanism put in place. But they did ask some other questions, the two representatives that were there. We addressed it, and I, the last, I kind of talked to them, is that they, they seemed to think that this was a better approach for the county to take as far as the pause button or this option. So with that, you've scheduled the second reading for this for your next meeting on the 22nd. With that, happy to answer your questions that you have for me at this time.
Are there any questions for staff?
Toby, you remember the map you created when Commissioner Schmidt and I came and talked to you about the CAFOs and said, okay, if we make these changes, here is where you can cite certain type of CAFO at? Can you create a graphical map with the programs you have up there showing where, under this proposed ordinance, people would be able to locate the four different uses?
Yes.
I think that would be really, it helps people just visualize where exactly one of these places, uses could be cited.
That's a good point.
And then, and then people can look at it, see for themselves, okay, this is how it's going to affect me or not affect me.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Toby, just to be clear, you referred to this as a pause ordinance, and just for those that might not be clear on that, what, what exactly do you mean by that?
Well, this, there, this isn't the pause version. The, the pause version was version number one that we presented at the Planning Commission meeting, and that would essentially stated that I would deny all applications that came out of my office until there was a medical license with the state. And then at that time, prior to that time, prior to October, we would have had to identify what the ordinance would be anyways. This version is not a pause button, this would establish the areas, the districts, the uses that would be allowable under the ordinance. Now, I won't take a stab at this, because I get two attorneys up there and I got one sitting next to me, but again, the overriding concern is, is that if we don't have anything in place by July 1st, someone could come into our department and submit a building zoning someone could come into our department and submit a building zoning permit to occupy an existing structure, proposed construction of a structure, that for all intents and purposes, it would be more than likely permissible under our current regulations.
Okay, thank you.
So this doesn't stop them from doing it. It just identifies the standards and where we want them to be.
But there are criminal laws in place that would essentially prevent them from being able to go into business anyway.
To operate, but not probably identify a location with the application.
Right. You, you know, you could locate, you could cite it all you want, but if you wanted to start to transport product in, you're not going to have the protections of the recreational and/or medical cannabis statutes to protect you from criminal prosecution. And the license requirements anyway say you have to be of good moral character. You'd be shooting yourself in the foot if you wanted to go into business earlier than what would allow you to, right?
To operate, yes, but it would probably be movie if you wanted to do it to file an application.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to item seven.
So first read, reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County adopting the twenty-twenty-one Lincoln County Flood Protection Ordinance for Lincoln County, South Dakota.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm John Peters, floodplain administrator for Lincoln County. This is the first reading for the twenty-twenty-one Flood Damage Protection Ordinance. Little background, Lincoln County participates in the National Flood Insurance Program. Participation in the program makes federal flood insurance available to all properties in the county, while Lincoln County must administer an ordinance to provide adequate protection from flooding. Our current floodplain management ordinance was adopted in twenty-eleven. FEMA has implemented changes to the floodplain mapping since that time, and we have pending maps in twenty-twenty-three that will be changed. The twenty-twenty-one Flood Damage Protection Ordinance addresses the changes we've had already and updates development standards based on the FEMA Region Eight model ordinance. FEMA and state NFIP have reviewed and approved the ordinance for adoption. And we will have a second reading on the 22nd. If you have any questions or would like further review of the ordinance?
Does anybody have any questions?
Madam Chair, I do.
Go ahead.
John, it seems as though that every, our floodplain keeps continuing to encroach on land, in my judgment. Will this adoption maintain what we presently call under flood, our flood control? Or will this add more floodplain to existing ones that are listed today?
You're talking about the areas covered by floodplain? Yes. We've received preliminary mapping, and those areas are more accurate, and in some areas are larger than what our previous mapping is. So in that case, there would be more areas covered. There's not a prohibition to building in the floodplain, but there are regulations that allow you to build certain ways. This ordinance does clarify and simplify for using and administration those rules. So that's the benefit of the changes in this ordinance. The changes to the mapping, we have used newer technology. They are very accurate. I've been waiting nineteen years for very good mapping. This is very good. There are still some quibbles on hydrology that has a lot of variables, things like that. But this mapping, when adopted, when done, it's been going through five years now of review and development, and it's still getting feedback from communities and, including us. At that time, we will have very good floodplain insurance data to regulate the dwellings and development appropriately and adequately to protect them from floodplain and to review for downstream impacts. So together with the new mapping and this ordinance, we will be at a very good place to regulate so that we do not have damage as we have had before with inadequate mapping.
Well, John, one of my, always my concern is I look at people that are purchasing property or they want to build on certain areas, and we see the dreaded blue with the lines through that it's a floodplain. And while I don't discount that it may be listed as that, I think in some ways, it really retards the ability for individuals to maximize the potential of their property. So when you say there are ways of getting around that, I would encourage by that because I, I, I think that I look around our county, and while we've had issues, we certainly could use a little flooding these days. But anyway, you know, you know what I mean. If there are ways that you can mitigate that and help these individuals who may be impacted by this expanded map, that would be encouraging. But I, I really have some issues on some, some places that we call floodplain, and I'm hard pressed to figure out how that got there, but I am not the scientist.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yeah, I'll follow up on Commissioner Schmidt's comments. These are good, useful tools. The, the part that I get troubled by is, at least in previous, and I have looked at the current proposed mapping, and there's still areas that I've been, been brought attention to that I've, just from living in Lincoln County for a few years, never have seen water standing in areas that they have designated as floodplain. But the burden of proof is not on FEMA. It's not on the, it goes back to the taxpayer that owns that property that has to prove that it's not in the floodplain. When you or I or whoever has lived in this area could say, yeah, that's never, ever had water sitting on it. But it's down to having to go through a very extensive and very costly, potentially, process of proving so. So I do want us to maybe put out to the general public that, you know, when these, before these maps get adapted, that they bring areas to our attention so we can be an advocate for them prior to that being done, so. I apologize to everyone. I do need to run now, but I want to thank everyone, and thank you, John.
John, I agree with what Commissioner Poppins is saying. I, I'd even go a step further is, bring us the map. Bring us the current map, bring the new proposed map side by side so that we can see that, you know, produce it for us, produce it for the public, puts everybody on record. That's number one. That, that's what I'd ask for. I assume you, you can produce a product like that for people to see. The other question I have kind of goes with Commissioner Poppins's concerns. Is this, is the ordinance here, I see it's a twenty-six-page, single-spaced document, is this a uniform law that, or a uniform ordinance created by some commission or entity, by NFIP? Or who, who drafted this document?
The actual document is drafted by myself and Joan Doss up in the planning department. It was based originally, the twenty-eleven was the Region Eight model. The formatting of that is very user-friendly. The twenty-eighteen model ordinance was the basis for our changes. There was a lot of language arrangement, things like that, not trackable in an easy manner. But the formatting was set up for ease of use, but it's based on the current FEMA document. Also, the communities in Lincoln County also use that format, again, different than how we have it laid out. But the essential rules and regulations are the same or similar. One of those is two foot above base flood elevation. It used to be one, now it will be two because of the flat topology and incidents where that has happened. The communities and we will be adopting that.
Yeah, and that's what I really want to zero in on. That's what I, I couldn't figure out from reading through it. What are the areas where you've, your department deviated from the, the model template or the uniform standard? And if, if you have that, I mean, it does need to be here done today. But if you've got some trackable changes or something, I'd be interested in seeing that.
Right. Those specific changes, they would be called higher standards than what the Code of Federal Regulations require, and those are recommended in the model ordinance. And that's what the other communities have adopted to, are higher standards. And yeah, I can have that list for you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it'd be important for the commission and the public to see that. Thank you.
No problem.
John, I, just follow up on that. So I, I agree with Commissioner Aaron's. I would like to see a typical property that may be affected by this. You know, I mean, if you have something that you can show where it was, this was the, under the old plan, and this is under the new plan, to get some visual idea on what the potential impact will be on for property owners under this new regulations that is being proposed. Just if you have a couple of examples.
Sure.
Okay.
Work on that.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And just a note, our commission meeting for July 27th is moved to July 29th. So if everybody can mark that on their calendars, if they haven't already.